Okay, good afternoon. Called a meeting to order, our finance committee meeting on the Pashtan County Board of Commissioners for Monday, June the 21st, 2021. Think we have one addition to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we will add item number 10, water rate study consultant.
Okay, testing, there we go. Okay, so we have, what was it, water rate?
Water rate study consultant.
Okay, so could I have a motion to add that to the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Remove problem second, that we add that to the agenda, would be number 10, I believe. Any questions? All those in favor, that'd be known by I. All opposed, nay. As have it, so ordered. Our first order of business then is tax releases and refunds. A chance to look at them.
Chairman, make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Remove problem second, that we accept the tax releases and refunds. Any questions? All those in favor, that'd be known by I. I. All opposed, nay. As have it. Number three would be the budget amendments. Sherry?
Yes, sir. On the first one, you're saying that we are increasing revenue for sales tax, Article 39, by 700,000. We're increasing sales tax, Article 40, by 30,000. Sales tax, Article 42, by 190,000. And we reduced the revenue that we were projected to get for loan proceeds by 1 million 240,000. With the increase, collections of sales tax, we did not have the warrant in mind this year. The second one is to increase the dock and office stance revenue collected by the pressure desalves, 90,000. And to decrease interest earned revenue by 90,000. The next one is to increase sales tax, Article 44, 524, of 2,830 dollars. And to increase utilities for commerce, 4300. Maintenance grounds for commerce, 4000. Contracted services for commerce, 4000. And insurance general liability by 530,000. The next one is for the public health medical examiner. That is to increase parish tax receipts by 14,000. And to increase expenditure for medical examiner by 13,000. The next one is for the county attorney. That is to increase epidemic taxes for 2017 by 20,000. To increase loss of present use exemption by 6,000. To increase reporting fees by 37,000. And to increase legal fees by 663,000 dollars. Thus to appropriate additional revenues. And to increase legal fees for Sotero Layton hundreds. The next one is for capital reserve. That is to increase the sale of assets revenue by 138,000. To decrease interest earned by 27,000. And to increase capital reserve unallocated by 111,000. And thus to decrease the appropriation interest fund and to increase appropriation of sale of assets, which was the Mooyart property and capital reserve unallocated. Does anyone have any questions on the first page?
Any questions? I'll wait till the end. Is that wait till the end?
All right, second page. The first one is for utilities department. And thus to increase bond bonds appropriated by 600,000. And to increase the transfer to RA for 600,000. And then on the RA side, we have to increase the revenue from transfer from the water system by 600,000. And to increase capital outlay by 600,000. This is for transfer for bonds from the Wixwell system to the RA for water related to the South Dakota Water System. The next one is for landfill operations. And this is to increase white goods disposal tax revenue by 6,000. To increase tip and fees charge revenue by 100,000. To increase tip and fees cash revenue by 17,600. To increase sale of scrap metal by 14,000. And to increase the tire disposal fee for line item by 28,000 expenditures. To increase lab fees by 15,000. And to increase contracted services transfer station by 95,600. Thus to appropriate additional revenues for the overage and dispossessed loan items. The next one is for landfill sites. That is to increase the solid waste fee revenues for 2018 by 7,600. To increase the solid waste fees for 2019 by 10,000. And to increase workers' comp expenditure loan item by 17,600. And this was to appropriate additional revenues to cover the overage and workers' compensation due to a classification change of site attendance. The next one is for landfill revenues. And that is to increase solid waste fees by 20, in 2015, by 6,000. Solid waste fees 2016 by 11,000. And decreased interest earned by 17,000. And thus to appropriate additional collections in 2015, 2016 solid waste fees. And to decrease appropriation interest earned. The next one is mine department. Thus to increase state grants revenue by 88,250. And to increase the COA boardwalk project by 82,250. Thus to appropriate grant funds for the COA boardwalk project. The last one is for the grants fund. And this is to increase the revenue line item for the American Rescue Plan Act, 3 million 867,673 dollars. And to increase the line item for those funds or expenditure of 3,000, 3 million 867,673. And thus to appropriate receipt of American Rescue Plan Act funds that we just received. The reason is to the unallocated expenditure loan items, the board hasn't made a definite decision on how they want to expend those funds at this time. Once that decision's made, we'll move it to the proper line items.
Okay. So let's do this, let's entertain a motion first, and then each of you can get a chance if you have any questions. And now get a motion to accept, a motion to approve the amendments as presented. Second.
Second.
Remove problem second, that we move that we accept the amendments, the amendments, budget amendments. Now we'll start seeing whether we have any questions. Commissioner Mead?
I don't have any questions, but I got a statement. You know, I think staff has done an excellent job in keeping us from having to raise our taxes. I just want us to keep in mind in the next few years that we got some pretty big projects coming up, EMS and COA. So we need to make sure we are putting some money aside for those projects and we don't have to borrow extensive amount of money in return having to raise our taxes. So I think that's something we need to do, and especially with the city talking about raising their taxes, that we need to make sure that Pashtan County is affordable for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Oberman?
Where are you then? All right, so just real quick, the budget amendments got put in twice in my agenda, so I got a chance to read them more than once. But I look, I just want to pause on that very first one, the 1.2 million dollars that we did not have to borrow. Good, good job there to staff, really kudos, pat on the back for that. I want to pause and make sure everybody in the audience and behind the camera lens understands that we didn't have to borrow, you know, 1.2 million dollars that we went in thinking we were going to. My next one is really just, is this going to be everything to wrap up this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Do these include projections to take us to the end of June or whatever?
June 30th, and the sales tax is a conservative increase. That's just our portion, it doesn't count the school's substantial portion.
I don't really have any other, I don't really have any other questions, just a statement that landfill revenue where we're moving 17,000 dollars out of the interest earned. You know, I hope we've taken some conservative estimates in what our interest-bearing accounts are going to earn over the next, over the next fiscal year. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I'll reduce what I'm coming.
Commissioner Berry?
Twenty-eight thousand dollars to move tires, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what it costs to move.
It costs more than that, that's just what I need to get the line item in line.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rippon? Okay, I guess no other question. I see there's several things happening here with the landfill. The budgets ran over because the...
Well, I wasn't 100% sure if they would be in compliance, but this is my last chance to do budget amendment, so some of it I thought they might be borderline, I just went ahead and did a budget amendment to be safe.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing to add on the American Rescue Plan Act funds, that 3 million 867 dollars. Of course, we just received that. And also, they just released the guidelines on Friday. So with the original last year with the coronavirus relief funds, they released guidelines, and the guidelines changed. So one thing we want to make sure is that we're going to, Sherry and I, there's several seminars, webinars, we're going to be watching. We've also been advised to hold off on any plan for those funds, waiting for the state and federal government. Because what you want to do is try to maximize the use of those local funds, potentially for match funds to state and federal funds, particularly when we are looking at infrastructure, which is going to be the SAP recommendation, water and broadband. In particular, there's supposed to be some funding available at a state basis from broadband. So that's, that's just kind of the, you know, it's nice to have those funds, but you don't want to jump and make a plan when we don't have complete information yet.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, that'd be known by I. I. All opposed, nay. As have it. Next, we're going to have a presentation of the African-American experience of northeastern North Carolina. And we have our friend, Rena Rubeek. Elizabeth City, she's the executive director. Nice having you with us.
Thank you.
For yours.
Thank you so much, thanks for a few minutes of your time today. I'm here to talk to you about two different segments of tourism work that has been happening. And the first is a brand-new tourism initiative called the African-American Experience of Northeast North Carolina. And it's a six-county collaborative project that we've been working on for quite some time. And it just launched this weekend, so we're trying to get out and share the news so that everybody, one, knows about it, and two, can help share the site, follow us on social media, and give us ideas to make it better. Where am I supposed to point, Lynn? There's one more. There we go, thank you. That works. Point at Lynn. She's a good person, thank you. So it is essentially, right now, a digital African-American heritage history trail. And our mission is to inspire exploration and appreciation for the African-American experience of northeast North Carolina, and ultimately to drive cultural tourism and economic impact. And our vision, the African-American experience of northeast North Carolina, which is the name, celebrates the conversations of African-Americans and encourages a deeper understanding of the significance of the region's cultural heritage in order to build more inclusive communities. This is, as I mentioned, the six-county initiative. What's kind of fun about this is COVID actually made this happen. The six, well, all of the tourism directors throughout the state started meeting virtually because we couldn't meet in person. And regionally, we said, what can we do to work together? You know, we're kind of all spread out, it's a pretty rural area, but we wanted to work together more, and we landed on this project that's been talked about for a long time. So last summer, we started tossing this idea around, and it came to fruition, in particular, over the winter months, 100% virtually. So COVID did do some good things. And you guys are familiar with, of course, all the counties that all those tourism bureaus represent. And the reason for this is we have an amazing amount of black history throughout northeastern North Carolina, and there's really no way to access it or experience it. So we built a website. It just pulls together all of this really cool content and makes it easily accessible for anybody who wants to look at it. I'm not going to read through all this info, if you guys have it all, but of course, I'm going to encourage you to go to the website and look at all of it. But in Currituck, there's the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School. Kirkwomen's has the Colored Union Soldiers Monument. And Dare, the P. Island Cook House, which I also know about, and I think is really cool for the Coast Guard Outdoors Marathon. And then I'm really thrilled by the fact that Chauan, Camden, and Pashtan were all connected by the National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. We all have different sites, and specifically in Pashtan. Our river, and I didn't know this until I started researching this project, is the first river in the entire country that was designated a river as part of the National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. And it just really shows you how interconnected all of our counties are with this black history, and so we want to do our best to share it. So as I mentioned, we've been working together for quite some time. It started with the tourism directors, we have all put money into the pot, so all six counties are funding this initiative. But we also recognize the importance of bringing in more than just tourism folks. So each county has two to three representatives from within the county, and those representatives either represent black culture or have significant historical knowledge of the topic. So for us, as an example, we've got a couple of ECSU history professors that have been providing our content, which is really good because they know a lot more about the history than I do. As I mentioned, it just launched this Saturday. We did, of course, launch it on Juneteenth, which made a lot of sense for this particular project. The website URL is on the bottom, we are on Facebook and on Instagram, and I do encourage you to please go to the website, follow us on whichever social channel works for you, share, share the news, talk about it, and help us get the word out. This is just the beginning. So we literally just launched this website. It's a great collection of sites that you can visit now, visit today, but we have so much work to do. We have really cool history, even just right here in Elizabeth City. As an example, some of you may have heard of the WT Grant sit-in, which was where some students from ECSU sat at the lunch counter and said, hey, we should be allowed to eat here too. The building doesn't exist anymore, there's no sign on the road, so we can't send people to go visit that site, but that history is really important. So our next phase might be to add a section to the site of other cool history that you might know about, or depending on funding, and if we perhaps create a nonprofit, curate those assets with signage or more infrastructure. There's a lot of directions this could go. It really depends on how much support we get and how much interest there is across all six counties. And how can you help? I've already mentioned, go to the website, follow us on social, actually get out, go visit some of the sites. This is important. If you have ideas to help us make this better, please let us know. This is by no means done, and we know there's a lot of information out there that we have not yet tapped into, so please let us know. We are hoping to, other things, we've talked about, add a section on supporting black-owned businesses. As a reminder, this is still a tourism initiative, so our mission, all six tourism bureaus, is to drive increased visitation and drive economic impact. So we're always kind of, kind of look at it through that lens, but there's many ways to do that. I would very much appreciate if it would be appropriate if you could sign a resolution of support at a future meeting, when we do go for grant funding requests in the future, to have, you know, a nice collection of letters of support or resolutions of support. That would be super helpful, and I have a sample of one I can share, so you don't have to write it. And then obviously, eventually, potentially provide funding or other resources as appropriate. I'm going to pause there before I switch gears and talk about other specific Visit Elizabeth City stuff, see if you guys have questions, or I can keep going.
Any questions?
I have a question, excuse me.
No, no, we have it.
So just, just a couple of things. What are the, what are the eras? What times are you currently planning on doing exhibits for?
What, like what period in history?
Yeah.
No, any time that would be, so from the late 1600s on.
On. It's interesting, your idea, and I don't know if we can go back and look at some of the records from like last September, but last September before I was on the Special Projects Committee, I wrote a letter to the committee, a couple of pages, some pictures in there, so it's not a long read, advocating for doing something very similar to this. One of the central points of writing that letter was to teach the rich history, right? You put it in the context, in the background of like the Confederate monument down there, and then further on the grounds, I know commissioners have kind of brought up the first African-American commissioner that was elected to the board. And so this area is rich, you know, Black Lives Matter buildings that are vacant right now. And there are so many history, historical sites that you can visit, but there's no guide to them. Do you know who Michael Little is?
I don't, I have not met him.
Okay, so Michael Little is the guy who's painting the mural out on the street right there. And I'll just, I got it pulled up on my phone. And one of his quotes in the article says, "At times, it feels like we are just second-class citizens." I mean, do you consider African-Americans part of the community? Yeah, yeah. So that kind of, if you believe that, right, then shouldn't this just be an experience of northeastern North Carolina? That's my point of view. If you want to make this more inclusive, it's the story of this area, like it or not. The Underground Railroad is huge, and I think we need to do more to really highlight a lot of that history. But I worry that, you know, some of the things that we're doing don't bring unity and may segment more. So I'd encourage to kind of think of that consideration. And you want, you know, maybe a suggestion, right? So I think from the Confederate monument to the Black Lives Matter mural, it's maybe 150 feet. I think in 150 feet, you tell 110 years of history from when that thing was erected. I think it's, it's part of that story of overcoming obstacles, right? You consider that people were considered property and yet have achieved so much in this area, and these are untold stories. So I do like the idea of telling the story, of telling the history. I think we need to frame it as the history of this area. Because they absolutely have contributed to the community and are part of it. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Perry?
I think that if you, if you go get a lot of African-American history, the schools, Pelemon High School, probably produced as many successful African-Americans as there are in this particular area. And if you can get a lot of the history from the schools, it pretty much would tell you a lot about what happened with African-American history. Give you a good example, the 46th Quartermaster General for the United States of America is right from Pelemon High School.
I did not know that.
From New Land Mill Pond Road. That is history. And I guess many of the older people can go ahead and tell you, if you talk to a lot of you, something you asked about Little. Herman Little is the boy's father, Marlene Little is the boy's mom. That's painting out there. I was totally surprised, he was so quiet when he was very young, but I'm saying what I want to say to you is, if you ask a lot of the older people, pretty much what happened yesterday, they have stories they can tell about, and I said, the schools will tell a lot about what happened yesterday. Because people in this county, African-Americans, then get on the school bus until 1950, and they're there in the elementary school. So, and a lot of older people know that, but they're not going to tell you without the right people that you have on the community, in the community to tell you about that. And all these communities down here, one of the connections was Northern Southern Railroad, that railroad right out there. That is the way people traveled back and forth from the country to the city. They would ride trains to Plymouth, ride trains wherever, and they would get off at the train station and walk. So, but there's a lot of history that if you don't talk to people, you're not going to know about, but that I can tell you. But I do know that over in Edenton, Plymouth, and the majority of the all-black high schools, probably people that went to the all-black high schools, more than likely could tell you a lot about the history of this community.
Thank you, I'll follow up on that. Probably.
Okay, Commissioner Rippon?
Good, thank you.
I think we ought to congratulate you. I think it's great that you're pulling this, I guess, your Afro-Americans together, because we need to know the history of all of our people that live here in this community. And I think that's a great first step, and we work towards bringing us together, is that we understand the history of each other. So that's great.
Thank you. Awesome. So now I'm going to switch gears a little bit. All right, you can jump ahead for a moment. Two slides, there you go. I'm going to pause here for a second. Some of you may already know this, but this is a chance for Visit Elizabeth City to pat ourselves on the back a little bit, which doesn't happen all that often. We earned official destination marketing accreditation. It was a two-year process, and I want to put that into perspective, because there's a lot of accreditation programs for other organizations out there. In the destination marketing world, there, though, there's only one program, and only 200 DMOs in the world have earned that accreditation. And there's about 75 DMOs in North Carolina, 3,000 to 4,000 in the US, tens of thousands in the world. We're one of those 200 out of those tens of thousands. So that's a really big deal, and it speaks to kind of the level of professionalism that we're working to help our tourism bureau reach. And that was our board, that was our staff, that was a whole lot of work. So I just wanted to share that news with you guys before I jump into our plan of work for fiscal year 2021, 2022. So we all know what happened two months ago today, Andrew Brown Jr. lost his life. When that happened, I knew that that meant we had to completely shift gears from a tourism perspective. There is no traditional travel and tourism, advertising, or public relations campaign, at least for the next couple of months. So I took some time, I contacted my peers and destinations who have unfortunately experienced somewhat similar events as we have, including Minneapolis, Louisville, and Charlottesville. I talked to diversity experts, I talked to the state tourism experts. And all of those conversations and that research helped us as a board realize that we needed to shift our plan of work to something a little bit less traditional than tourism normally would do. But it is important to keep us as an organization moving forward and meeting our mission, that will also hopefully help the entire community. So the first one is we have engaged with a public relations firm, you may actually recognize that name, it's the firm we worked with last fall. And they're the ones who got us, you know, we were the coolest town in Buzzfeed, and one of the best small towns to go visit in Forbes. Well, that type of accolade isn't going to happen at the moment because of the, you know, ongoing civil unrest, the daily protests, the negative media perception that is currently out there of our community. So we are working with them, I'm not quite there yet, to do public relations. We're looking for positive stories about our community, about our business members, things that we can push out to help shift that negative narrative to a positive narrative. They're also available to help us with crisis communications, as need be as the case progresses. And also, we are working through them, the group called the Black Travel Alliance, to provide consulting and input, and help us make sure that our messages resonate when we push them out, and help the current situation. Next, we are currently seeking a diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant. And I think this kind of speaks to some of the stuff that Sean was mentioning. In order for us to do a good job and tell Elizabeth City and Pashtan County's story, we need to know how our community feels. The number one reason people come to visit our community is to visit friends and family. Well, if we don't know how the people who live here feel, do they feel included? Then we can't do a good job telling our story. So we are going to ask this consultant to do a community assessment, and that is part of why I'm bringing this up, is I'm hoping that you guys will participate in that assessment. It's really important that community leaders become part of that process. We will then use that assessment and learn how our community, everybody, feels, to develop new programs, and also to do our last thing, which is to redo our strategic plan. So we have a traditional tourism strategic plan, it's about driving more overnight visitation and increasing economic impact. But we need to do it now through this lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'll end by saying, when I spoke to my peer in Charlottesville, the incident in Charlottesville was obviously different than what happened here, but it was three years ago. And she shared with me that... And she shared with me that addressing DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion is a part of her job to this day, every day, even three years later. So this isn't going anywhere. This is part of our community, and we need to, as community leaders, embrace it and figure out how to do our jobs in a positive way moving forward that will still drive economic impact, will still drive visitation, and still make our community members feel welcome. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, the arena? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the information you provided to us. Okay, the next, our agenda is another presentation from Mike Urban, who's the Executive Director, Sharon Smith, the Special Project Administrator of Alamoal Commission. Thank you. Nice having you with us.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Jordan and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to come over and introduce ourselves. I've been the ED for a year now, and Sharon has been a little bit less than a year as our Special Coordinator, Special Projects Coordinator. But what our efforts are today is to just make sure that you put a face to the Alamoal Commission to also get a feel for really what we do. Sometimes a lot of Commissioners we talk to do not have an understanding of all of the functions that we do. And more importantly, what some of the functions that we're carrying out at this time, those can be very important. So I want to discuss our general operations, and then Sharon, as our Special Projects Coordinator, will talk about some of our broadband efforts that are so important right this minute throughout the region. We obviously do workforce. A lot of you are familiar with workforce, and it's an element within not just this region, but North Carolina as a whole. And you know that right here in Elizabeth City, we have the largest office throughout the region. It's located here in Elizabeth City at South Park. This was just moved this past year during the COVID episode, and it's been a fluctuating event and effort because of COVID. We've had to close it down for a while, we've had to open it back up. But nevertheless, workforce is very important, and that, right this minute, is a major undertaking. We have so many more businesses that are asking us for employees than we can get to go to work. So it's a, it's a struggle with some of the efforts that we do undertake, but it's very important. The other area that is major in our region is Council of Aging. A lot of people do not understand all of the little intricate parts that make Council on Aging work, from nutrition to in-home care that we may direct to ombudsmen, who actually goes into all of the nursing facilities throughout our region to check on the quality of service that's being given to the residents there. There's just a lot that we do at Council of Aging, and in fact, I would tell you, we are, of all sixteen COGS, Council of Area Government, which Alamoal Region is one of them, we perform more duties than any of the other fifteen throughout the state. Now, we also have the smallest population, we'll be far from out the smallest territory to cover. We've got ten counties, only one other cog has more than that. That's the tri of Greensboro. They have twelve counties, so we cover ten counties. And as far as mileage goes, with the water separation and the rural settings, we've got some of the largest areas to cover, even though our population may be the smallest, it still takes as much time to provide these services as anyplace else in the state. So we're really proud of what our Council of Aging does, because it is ranked as the busiest council of aging in the state of North Carolina. We also do economic development in the region. We are currently on board with a couple of major projects that we're in. We are trying to establish more economic development throughout our ten counties. One of the other areas we've worked on is the central single-family loan pool. We coordinate for nine of the ten counties. That is, the state gives us roughly $190,000 a year for each county to go in and help constituents within those counties. Typically, these are elderly individuals that may have problems with their homes. It could be anywhere from roofing to plumbing to electrical problems, whatever it is. And we've worked with agencies such as Social Security, or the Health Department, or other departments within your county that let us know that individual needs help. So we have $190,000 for Pasquotank County to work on projects for your elderly. So we do those projects, and we coordinate those. But there's a tremendous amount of other things that we do that people just don't realize. The biggest that Sharon's going to talk about is our undertaking for broadband. This past year, we jumped on it with both feet. We've got some really good news, and hopefully Sharon will impart what's going on with broadband throughout the ten counties. Now, just one, but all ten.
Thank you for having us. I joined the Alamoal Commission last fall under funding from the EVA Cares Act. And my job description, I guess, or I was charged with helping local businesses and our regional economy recover from the economic effects of COVID. So kind of a big job description and other duties as assigned. But I spent a couple of months trying to get the lay of the land, if you will, and trying to figure out just what it was our businesses and our economy needed to recover. And one of the main things that we kept coming back to time and again is broadband expansion and just adequate access for our folks. And we bounced back and forth from this plan to that plan, and I'll tell you, not a day goes by that we're not working on broadband in some capacity there at the Alamoal Commission. After several months of looking at it, we realized that we really are just going to have to piece together a plan that out of our ten counties, the needs are so different. We might talk about the water and the trees, and those are beautiful and great for tourism, but not so much for broadband access. Because it's hard to get, you know, across water and over those trees. We have recently been in talks with the North Carolina Rural Center. And if you're familiar with them, you know that they advocate for our rural areas across the state. And it looks like we're entering a discussion to maybe have a partnership with them to actually build out the rest of our area. So that's the last mile, meaning that there are connections, and there's broadband, there's fiber in the ground to a lot of our government offices and, you know, some locations within each county. And we're looking at a plan whereby we would, as Alamoal Commission, build out from those, from that backbone, out to some trunks, I call it. And then those spokes could be carried to the home by our local broadband providers. So we think this is kind of a life-changing solution that might come to fruition. And we're working on it, like I said, every day. So if you all have areas in your, I don't know if you all are divided by district, but if there are specific areas within a community of concern, we ask you to let us know where those are. And if you've thought of solutions for that particular area or another one, please let us know. Because what we're going to be doing is just piecing together a plan to make sure that all of your residents have adequate broadband access. We've seen during COVID that it's not a want anymore, it's definitely a need. And for us to recover adequately in our region, we're going to have to have this broadband access. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So if we do enter into this project with the NC Rural Center, it'll be the first of its kind in the state. So it'd be sort of a guinea pig, but we don't mind that. I think they actually mentioned some things they thought, well, if we can do it in the Alamoal Region, we can do it anywhere. So I thought, well, but that is true. And so the Rural Center is looking at helping us create a program, but one that's replicable across the state and then across the country, maybe. So we're really excited, and they've chosen to work with us because we kind of had our ducks in a row, believe it or not. We appreciate y'all. And there are other needs that we can help you with? That's what we're here for. So we've identified broadband as a big problem, a big issue that we've tackled. But if there are other needs that you need, other needs that you've identified, please get in touch with us. If we don't have the answer, we can connect you to some resources who do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I would just say, Mr. Urban, Council on Aging. We have a couple of Commissioners here that know a little about that. We both served on that. But then Sean Levin, Levin and I, we served, and we could, we could tell you a couple of things. We won't take the time.
It's really vast, isn't it?
Yes. Okay, let's see whether there are any questions for you. Mr. Mees?
Just a comment I'm excited to hear, and you're exactly right. The reason, you know, I talk to my friends in the Piedmont area, they don't understand what Finger Counties mean. So I had to explain it to them. We're very long and thin, and it's, they just don't have an understanding of. We don't really have a hub center. It's long one way, long the other, so to get any kind of services to the vast ends is nearly impossible. So if we can maybe work here, you're right, they can do it anywhere.
That's right. And that's why we determined that a regional approach was going to be so important for us.
I would like to mention also that what the obstacles that we ran into last year was that whenever we're trying to get federal grants or even state grants, they utilize the FCC MAX. And the FCC MAX have a tremendous failure, that is, if there's one house within that service block, then FCC says it's covered. So you could have 400 more houses that have no coverage whatsoever. The new MAX that we're working with that's just been developed shows that in northeastern North Carolina, there's between 25% and 40% of our residents is that do not even receive 25.3 coverage, which is the very minimum. You've got to have that. If not, anything, you've got a cell phone or your computer at home just buffers all the time. You just don't hit it. So this is a major undertaking that we finally have bridged some gaps. And this is even, of course, Commissioner Griffin is our chair, and this is some new information he is not even aware of. It goes, this just came in Thursday of this past week, and then we've been talking to various bodies today on the phone about it, including our legislators who are backing us in this.
We get Thursday night movie on Sunday, now we just.
Okay. Mr. Levin? Yeah, just a few comments, and then I'll, and I'll get to my question. Like Mr. Jordan mentioned, we are very intimate with your senior activities and have worked even as members of this board to encourage more participation within the local committee by putting the stipend in for those members. And we hope that, we hope that you're seeing an impact there. We may still have some work to do, because we do have a lot of facilities in the, in the county. I think we realize that. I'm familiar, of course, with the workforce development, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Griffin is obviously, you know, the chairman of Alamoal Commission, so intimate with all the good work that you and your people do there. Some of the staff that I've met there are just absolutely excellent and rock stars. Going to a couple of, a couple of points, one being the broadband. If there is a week that goes by that I don't get an email about broadband being an issue, it's because my internet's down. And to Mr. Overman's point, the issue seem to be down Wheatsville and Newland, up Providence area, where the, where the coverage is weak, kind of on the, on the ends. And it is kind of a tourism impact. You know, you do have all the scenery around, the rivers, the trees, that you're seeing this migration out of the metro areas. People want to work from home now that they can, and that's becoming more of an acceptable practice and policy through all employers. And we've got this great scenery and cheap housing and no internet to go with it. So especially when the schools, you know, return, if they do any type of remote, anything, we're going to need to have something in place. So my question is, all after leading up to that. We've kind of been holding on, waiting. What should we do? Should we go out on our own? Should we partner with other folks? It sounds like we're leaning towards partnering to try to make the most out of our money. So my question is, what steps can we do to help identify the plans that we need for Pasquotank County? Should we go ahead and start forming a working group to consult with, with the Alamoal Commission at that level? Maybe you haven't been asked that from other counties, but at the end of the day, again, I think we need to be prepared with what meets the needs of our county and our residents.
First and foremost, we are working on that and asking four counties to come into a meeting with us. Here, here's the biggest problem we've got. With the ARP money coming in, there's no clarity as to how much of this could really go to broadband. The Treasury has came out with a couple of statements associated with other sources of funding that came through, like on the auction last year. If your organization happened to get money for your county, then the question is, can the ARP money really fund your county now? So there's some clarity that has to be made by Treasury, and those questions have been asked of Treasury. And there's slowly some progression coming out. But we stopped, we were going to have a meeting this past week of all of our county representatives, trying to form a coalition to maybe better utilize the funding in a regional respect as opposed to each county undertaking their own services. The state asked us not to do this. They are currently doing the same thing, trying to gather their NCORR as well as.
NC Pro.
NC Pro Office to have a, like a Zoom meeting for all of the representatives to explain how the money will fundle out of their offices once they reach the state. So there are monies that have gone directly to the counties, but there's a lot of other monies that will go to individual departments within the state that will fundle those monies on further to counties, COGS, municipalities. So we, we would really suggest you hold on and not do anything until we see exactly how those monies are progressing. And on top of that, we, this, this data that we received from North Carolina Rural Center today, we would like to submit that out to the counties and let them see what they're proposing, because this is a regional proposal. It's not just a county by county. So it shortcuts a lot of monetary commitments on each county's behalf, and that's the goal. The goal is to leverage all of your monies that you come in under the ARP, whether it's for water, or wastewater, or broadband, or whatever it is. If we can leverage these monies, we're much better off. We met last week with Per Clemmons and Herford in reference to their wastewater issue where they bind together. And we think that we've ended up working out a solution, but we're leveraging the funds that are coming to them. So it's, leverage is going to be the key.
And I can echo that. So if you don't mind telling your constituents to hold on just a little bit longer. I know it's hard because they see this big pot of money in your checking account and think, okay, I want my movies on Thursday night. But this consultant and this group that we put together for this collaboration really has put forward, excuse me, a very aggressive timeline. And I think you're going to be pleased with it. So not much longer.
Just one follow-up then. You know, I'm, I'm one of those guys who believes in very few circumstances where more government is better. So if, if partnering with the Alamoal Commission expands the pot of money and provides for the needs of the residents of Pasquotank County, then I'm all for it. But if we're going to be dictated how to spend our money, and we're not necessarily going to really be able to provide the input, that's my, that's my concern at the end. So my question then to you, you mentioned tying in other state funding that were part of this act, but don't forget that many, not all, of your ten-county region is comprised of other tier-one counties. And there may be other grant opportunities available to a lot of your territory.
And to follow up on that, you are correct, but there are two counties that are looking at possibly joining together right now with a different provider to do the very same things we're talking about. And it looks like it's going to be $20 million, whereas what we're offering will be about $14 million. So that's a big savings for two counties.
Absolutely.
So that's the importance. And we don't want to control any of this. Alamoal Commission, showing now, does not want to control any of this. Does not want to control any of this. This is a group effort. We want all the counties at the table.
There's an opinion piece in the Charlotte Observer, I got the link, I can probably send it to you. Talks about letting the counties take the lead and determine what their needs are. So as long as we're at the table and we have that voice, then I think we're all.
Absolutely. And Mike talks about applying for the extra state monies. In large part, he's talking about the commission applying for those monies too, so that we would have them. That would be our contribution to the regional project.
And one thing I want to emphasize so importantly, we're not talking about Wi-Fi. We're talking about lending the fiber to the homes. That's what this project is. It's fiber to the home. You're not going to get any better than that. And it's scalable. So when this fiber is dropped off, we're looking at 100, 100 speed to the home that can be scaled up. So that's the key.
Well, I do need to say, I guess there might be some areas out in the fingers where we have to do fixed wireless for now.
For, yeah.
We're working on that too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then I guess my question is, how people know exactly how to apply for support and so forth? You know, I think that a lot of programs out there that have money and so forth, many times they overlook the fact that a lot of people don't know exactly how to get to the money.
I think that's a big issue.
Yeah, that is.
A big issue here in northeastern North Carolina. It seems like a lot of red tape, seems like a lot of government, like Mr. Levin said.
Right.
And the decision has just been made, oh, we're not going to fool with it. But I want to tell you that that's what we're here for, me specifically. So if there's a project that you need funding for, you just call us.
Well, what I would like to see sometimes in writing, in, well, maybe on Starlo Radio or Facebook, someplace exactly what's available to people. Because a lot of times if you ask people, just general people out there, about the money that's available out there, they don't have an earthly idea what we're talking about in here. So I think that we need to look carefully at how we actually distribute and, you know, give people a chance to remodel their house, I guess, as one of the projects. And there are a lot of project houses in our community that probably could use some funds, but I doubt very seriously if most people know that you have money that they might could, if possibly could, you know, could have available to them.
And that's why we're here today.
And that is part of the problem. We depend on other agencies, social services or, you know, any other agencies to help feed those people to us because most people do not know to look for us.
Right.
You know, they don't.
They don't win the last call. How many African-Americans are on your board?
On our board is three, three on our major board.
Tracy, Tracy Johnson, Connie Brothers, Mydella Lee.
Who?
From different counties.
Yeah. You have people from different counties?
Yes, from 10 counties.
Oh.
Each had one, so that would be 10 people.
There's 14 with two rotating. Every other year, it rotates members.
Who is on this end?
Doc Hager, Alden Hager.
Who?
Alden Hager, he's on the board about eight years ago, 10 years ago.
Okay. I don't know you're talking about.
So we have three African-Americans on that board, and then we have some on our subboards as well.
But all I'm trying to, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to question you, but sometimes you need to look real careful if you want information disseminated. And make sure that people are included, that can actually disseminate information. If not, it's not going to be very successful.
But I, and I appreciate that comment. I do know that based on what you just said, there's one thing I do believe. We need to somehow, and we can do this through some marketing technique, drive people more to our website because our website does include a lot of that data. So we just have to figure out a way to be more visible from the website view because that's a great place for things to.
Let me hear you. You can read a lot of things on Facebook.
Some not so good though.
All right, Mr. Griffin?
No, one of the things that, they're also working with, there's several other committees that they work with. With the aging program, Wheels on Wheels, we just expanded that a tremendous amount this year based on.
Lots.
On the COVID, almost about $800,000 for additional food, which goes back into the communities. That program has been a big beneficiary of this. Also, we're still waiting to hear what new allowances we'll have to work for safe routes to school and device. So just because they're talking about rural internet today. There's other programs that the agency does that go into the communities. I think there are 35 employees.
35 employees.
Spread over 10 counties, Hyde County, Derrick County.
There are.
There are, Washington, Chalston, Gates, Clemmons, Passquotan, Camden.
There are.
There. And there are members in those communities every day looking to assist the needs of those who need.
All right. Please don't hesitate to call us if you've got any question or concerns.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for providing information to us. You can see that the commissioners here were real interested in what you're doing. And there's certainly the broadband and many of the other areas, we are really interested.
Mike, could you explain about dark fiber and how that fiber is going to be connected into the communities? Because there's a disconnect right now.
Dark fiber is ran all the way here, all the way to the far reaches of most of the counties. It's owned by MCNC, which is a North Carolina dark fiber. They basically control who receives the utilization of the dark fiber. The dark fiber is really designed from their viewpoint to come to courthouse, the sheriff's department, EMS, any of those type facilities. And this past year, they started branching out to a lot of schools that they weren't in as well, libraries. So the dark fiber is not allowed to be used for commercial or residential purposes. That is one of the elements that we have been researching to see if there's not a way for us to attach to dark fiber. Well, theoretically, MCNC has told us that what we may be able to do is run dark fiber, let's say from this courthouse to the library if they don't have it. And then from the library, they may be able to lease part of their service out to the commercial buildings. So we were looking at various applications of even the North Carolina trunk of dark fiber. Dark fiber just means it's fiber sitting in the ground that they're not using. So, and again, it was designed to use more for emergency services than it was for residential or commercial needs. But if it's just sitting there, there's got to be a way to apply this. And we're finding that there are a few locations throughout the state of North Carolina that are, in fact, working around the requirements that the state put on the use of this dark fiber. We're one of them now. We're one that's working on it.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consideration request for occupancy tax funds.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Actually, the letter in your agenda is a request of appropriation for $1,000 for fiscal year 2021 and not 2122. So we just received this request. What I would ask is that recommend that we go ahead and request $2,000, $1,000 for this year, $1,000 for next fiscal year. If that, now, since the funding criteria for this Elizabeth City has changed, if that request is ultimately denied, then we'll come back and recommend a different funding source, which would be contingency funds.
So right down to your requesting that we.
Go ahead and request $2,000 from occupancy tax funds, $1,000 for this fiscal year, and $1,000 for next.
Okay. We have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second?
Second.
Move properly second. We allocate $2,000, $1,000 for this fiscal year, and $1,000 for next fiscal year. Any questions?
Just a question, right? This will have to go back to the Tourism Authority Board for final approval, right? This is just us requesting.
This is us requesting the funds. And then, once again, the criteria has changed since the last time. So if this is denied, then we'll recommend another source of funding.
Okay. Any other questions? Although in favor, let me know by aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, nay. As have it. It's accepted. Okay. So number seven is Pasquotan Camden Emergency Medical Services Contract.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The EMS board had recommended approval of the contract extension. What this does is it basically continues the same level of service in the same manner that we have in the past. So it's a 3% increase per year. But in addition, there was a discussion, of course, we've got the Community Partnership Care Medicine Program, which is a great program, and they are providing some services to Camden as well. That hasn't been factored in the call. So what I proposed to Camden Manager, Ken Boman, was if they wanted to continue the service, EMS had requested an additional position. And when we looked at the allegation of time, about half the time of that position would be Camden. So they did want to go ahead and participate. So they're covering one half of the total cost of that position, that salary benefits and the vehicle. So I would recommend approval of the three-year contract, which would also factor in that new position as well.
Okay. So the recommendation for the approval of the three-year contract for provisions of emergency medical services to Camden County. Have a motion, make a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Move in properly second. We approve the recommendation. Although, any other questions? Although in favor, let me know by aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, nay. Recommendation accepted.
Mr. Sparty, so if we move forward on this contract and we talk before to the change in the development criteria in Camden and the growth up there, I know we're starting to lose a long-term plan with Camden in that northern area. I guess that will be coming up in the next year or so conversation. And so is this contract, this extension, we just need to start out in that conversation so we don't get landlocked and get buffed out and something.
Yes.
Anybody can have any emergencies for the next three years in the future?
Okay. Number eight, one about papers something, since I've been a commissioner, is lobbyist contract.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Of course, our contract with McLeese Consulting expires on June 30th of this year. Jackson Stansel has been our primary consultant for the past six months. Jackson, first off, he sends us good information on a weekly basis and then he contacts me every week. So really feel that there's a noticeable change in the services being provided. Both Joe and Henry McLeese have now retired. So there are no, you know, so this would be a contract directly with Jackson Stansel's firm, Jones Street Consulting LLC. There is a proposed two-year contract for services. The last contract was a three-year contract. And I do recommend approval at the same annual cost as we had paid McLeese, which is $30,000 per year.
Okay. So that's the recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve, and I've got some comments when we come around to it.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Move in properly second. We approve it. Any question? Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're getting at least $30,000, paying out $30,000. I just want to make sure we're getting at least that amount, if not more, back. And so you think as the county manager, you believe that that's what we're getting back is at least.
Yes.
Do you think we'll get more?
Yes, I think he is going to, because really, you know, what he has done is provide some really good information this year. And we also, he's got a lot of contacts. And so just getting information in like we're trying to change the body camera wall. So he was, had several meetings. There were some things moving there. So yes, I do feel like we're getting our monies worth with Jackson Stansel.
Yeah, I mean, he brought a good presentation, you know, at our budget meeting at COA. I thought, and you know, I just worry about, you know, looking at a lobbyist, are we wasting our money or not wasting money? So I, you know, I just want to make sure that that's what we're doing, we're getting our monies worth.
It's a noticeable difference.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Overman?
Sparty, I would probably extend that as a monthly, we pay them.
We pay it every six months.
Six months.
So it's 15,000, we pay 15,000 on July 1, and then 15,000 on January 1.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do share a lot of the same feelings about Mr. Jackson Stansel and his firm comparative to the service that we've gotten in years past. I think he has shown that he is different. But that might have been a low bar, right? I'm just, I'm going to be extremely frank. I think we were all in agreement that we were ready to end all of our lobbying services. Back to what Commissioner Mead said, I like the shortened term because it kind of puts it out there that we're going to try you. You've done a good job of separating yourself from past experience. But we need, but we need to continue to see some of that offset for the 30K a year. And keeping us abreast of things that are of interest to the county is one thing, but making change is certainly something that we're looking for. For money to come and flow our way, for him to stand up for us with regard to, you know, some of the renewable resource tax credits that impact this county. We need a return on the 30K. And we're willing to take that chance because we have seen, we have seen some improvement. That's my opinion anyway.
Mr. Perry?
Of course, it's a great idea because I think I've been around long enough to see what we have. And I won't begin to compare. So I think it's a great idea and I support the change 100%.
Okay. Mr. Griffin?
I'm supportive. I think any time that you have somebody in Raleigh, because as we talked about last year, Sparty was hoping to be able to spend some of his time in Raleigh, have a fellow or somebody that could help him take some of the workload off of him. However, you have somebody that's entrenched. He was a former House of Representatives member. He does have the contact. If you talk to him, he's not scared to make a call or try to work through an issue with you. I mean, he does have our interests at heart. And he understands that, you know, we all come here together. And if you don't work together, that's what he's there for. So, I mean, I've talked to Jack, not as much as Sparty does, but if there's like, last couple of weeks ago, there was some kind of fishing legislation that some representative in the middle part of the state was trying to increase, because some official were asking about it. So I called Jack up. He looked into research right then, was able to find out. And I'm going to find out Bobby Hannick is the Rules Committee Chairman of that committee. And he said, you know, here's the answer. And so he's right on top of the answers. He knows how to find the information. So, and if there's a concern, he does not mind calling Sparty. And Sparty's told me, there's a problem that's been hit Pasquotan County. He's going to let us know. Because he's there every week. I mean, he has an office on Jones Street, and he's been stopped in Raleigh. Lives in Smithfield or somewhere near. So it's pretty close. Get all sorts of things.
Okay. All right. So we've got to vote on the recommendation, approval of two-year contract for lobbyist services with Jones Street Consulting LLC that are cost of $30,000 annually. All those in favor, let me know by aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, nay. As have it. It's approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I should have mentioned earlier that to Sean's point, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put a space saver on our agenda where we usually have Sparty's additional comments, Mike's additional comments, our additional comments, that will call our attention to, does anybody have anything going on that you've heard that we need to call him and tell him to be aware of? I know in my other employment, I spent a couple of weeks, just a month ago up there. And they're listening to the lobbyists because they assume that we're telling the lobbyists what we need. And so that's the ears, that's who has their ears. So for lack of trying to remember it once in a while, it wouldn't be a good, or wouldn't be a bad idea to put a place saver there, not every month, but occasionally to remind us to go, you know, we need to funnel this stuff to him and get some feedback. Just a thought.
Well, Barry, another thing that he did say, if there was something that was pressing and we needed to do a Zoom call, he would be, you know, like at our finance committee, that we need to have questions about, you know, pieces of blood, just hook me up on Zoom and, you know, take concerns or questions. So I think it's a follow-up on your question.
Yeah.
Trying to get moving forward. At least you're still in the link of, you know, there's need for him to travel now. We've got good expectations.
Well, you know, like I said, he wants to, to John's point, he wants to earn his keep, and by that, we need to funnel information back to him with expectations so he can answer those questions.
And that's what he's really, you know, concerned. He knows he has to show a dollar, dollar return. So.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next, number nine, the approval of rate reduction for 2009 water bond.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Sherry has found a way for us to save $390,000. This is a reduced interest rate on our 2009 water bonds from 2.99% to 2.02%. This is an easy one. Recommend approval, and we did send out the resolution that's got to be signed. But this is, this is a very positive thing. Thanks to Sherry.
Very good. Thank you, Sherry. I see that Mr. Mead's thinking you all right.
High fiver.
I want you to be aware too that we're also having to pay BPNT $5,900 because administration and they're losing money. This is the third time they've done this for Pascotank County. This is a thorough reduction. So they've been very great to work with. Also, we'll have a legal fee billed by the attorney. However, we'll still be saving money.
They're going to steal some, leave us some money.
A lot of money.
All right. So.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
You move properly second. We approve. Any question? Any more questions? Although in favor, let me know by.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. As have it. So what? Number 10?
So number 10 is a recommendation from the Utilities Committee coming up from that meeting just earlier this afternoon to go with McGill and Associates. And Sparty, if you've got any more detailing, you know.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We put out the request for proposals, and we had three firms that submitted. We narrowed it down to two firms. We did our interviews with the Utilities Committee this afternoon, and McGill just did a much better job presenting their information. And they have a very strong team that's going to be working on the project. And David, anything else you'd like that?
They are, my contact will be out of Weidensburg, so they, we feel good about him. They've been joining a long time, and he's staff recommendation to go with McGill for this water rate thing.
And they were kind of looking to.
Yes, they've done some work. Yes.
Okay. So we need to approve that?
Yes.
Okay. I got a motion to approve.
I make a motion. Second.
And Mr. Chairman, we need to recommend approval of McGill at a cost of $49,540.
Okay. So the approval of McGill, $49,500.
$540. $49,540.
$49,540. Okay. Okay? Any questions? It's okay?
Yes.
All right. Any questions? Although in favor, let me know by.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. As have it. I think that's the last item on our agenda for today.
Good job.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second. You move properly second. Let me adjourn. Although in favor, let me know by.
Aye.
You adjourn.